Good evening, everybody. How are you? Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting was noticed and sent to the Asbury Park Press on August 29th, 2022. Has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press, the issue of September 1st, 2022. All municipal clerks of the township, boroughs within the Freehold Regional High School District has been duly notified, and the requirements of this posting was met on August 29th, 2022. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is now.
Mrs. Iskado, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have a couple. So with respect to the items that were noted on the agenda that was pre-printed prior to the meeting, the Board did not discuss, for exception, and item number four, negotiations with custodial maintenance grounds. There was no discussion about that. In addition, prior to going into executive session, the following additional items were noted. For number seven, the Board discussed the matter under L-2968-20, and the matter P-2023-00447. The Board also discussed, under exception number three, student discipline matters and proposed agreement in lieu of discipline. Finally, under exception number eight, the Board discussed personnel issues.
May I have a motion to approve items C1 through C6? Mrs. Higley, may I have a second? Mrs. Capiello? Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Ms. McCob? Mr. Messinger? Mr. Perici?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11th Student Americanization Meeting? Mrs. Capiello?
Second.
Mrs. Higley, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. May I have a motion?
Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Ms. McCob? Mr. Messinger? Mr. Perici?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Just a reminder, all communications are on file with the Board Secretary's office. Dr. Sampson, are you ready for your report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So good evening, everyone. So just a few items to open. Obviously, just graduated six high schools last Thursday. Cut it right to the wire. I had the good fortune of being at Howell High School's graduation, this wonderful ceremony. I'm still listening to their rendition of "One" from One Voice, which was absolutely phenomenal. But we skirted the weather, and I'm now 13 for 13 with outdoor graduations, so I will take it at that. We did just a number, just some items about the class of 2023, and we report this out annually. So the high school district as a whole graduated 2,564 students. Approximately 89% of those students are going on to a two- or four-year post-secondary employment. About 1.2% are headed to the military with Freehold Township with the most number of students headed to the military with 10. And about 7% of those students are headed to career. Interestingly, you know, sort of pre and post-COVID, one of the trends we see, and this is self-reported data from our seniors, but we, from 2015, 16, 17, 18, thereabouts, we always ran at about 91 or 92% going to a two- or four-year college. And we've seen the past couple of years, that number's about 89%, so a little slight dip there. Our belief around that is that more students are taking gap years and/or going to trade schools or directly to employment, and so there's slight change since COVID, certainly. So, but the class of 2023 obviously had a significant portion of their high school career disrupted by COVID. I think that those students absolutely persevered and couldn't be prouder of that class. So it was a wonderful end to the school year for those students. We're going through our annual grades around the harassment, intimidation, and bullying, both district and school grades tonight, so everybody understands what that looks like. There's approximately seven categories that districts are graded on as it relates to compliance on the harassment, intimidation, and bullying law. The highest score a building can receive is a 78. Why they settled on a 78, I have no idea. It's a random number, but 78 is the number. All of our high schools clock in at either 77 or 78 in terms of, you know, meeting that compliance. So feel good about that. From annual violence and vandalism, tonight, one of the things that I am also reporting out on, and remember, we report out on these statistics twice a year, so I'm reporting out on Phase 1 for the 2223 school year, which is September through December of this year. A couple of trends that we notice, and again, making no political pronouncement on the legalization of marijuana, but we have seen a really sharp rise in possession of marijuana since it was legalized in New Jersey. And to give you a frame, the Phase 1 of last year was somewhere, I believe, 15 instances of possession. This past year, it was 35 across the district. So we're seeing a sharp intake of marijuana, very similar to what happened several years ago with the vaping epidemic, when suddenly, out of nowhere, you know, literally, almost no kids were smoking in schools for a decade, and then suddenly, you know, we were dealing with, you know, mass smoking from the vaping incident. So we've seen an uptick in that, and we've seen an uptick in social media threats, you know, threats over electronically. Some of those threats not from students in our district, but received by students in our district, certainly. Seen a little uptick in that. And, you know, a lot of good work going on in the school buildings to mitigate some of the mistakes that we know. We have 10,500 teenagers, and 10,500 teenagers are going to make mistakes from time to time. We understand that. We have obviously a number of clubs, activities, individuals, counseling, our guidance counselors, our SACS, clinicians in some of our buildings, all sorts of clubs and activities related to helping students make better decisions in our school district. It is certainly, this year in the buildings was noticeably calmer than it had been in the year immediately following the COVID pandemic. So I'm very hopeful for what the future might hold there. A couple of items about our financial situation. So the public may be aware that legislation was put forth in both the Assembly and the Senate to provide additional funding to stop, basically stop, the S2 cuts as it related to certain regional districts, of which Freehold Regional High School District met all that criteria. I believe that criteria was districts that had at least five towns, had administrative cost 15% below the average, had a number of shared services agreements, boxes that the Freehold Regional High School District checks because we are an exceptional district. We are an anomaly in the state as the largest regional high school district. We do have an economy of scale. For years, we've been advocating for change to the funding formula. We're very hopeful that that's going to come to fruition. I do want to publicly thank Senator Gopal and Senator O'Scanlon for cosponsoring legislation to help alleviate the massive cuts we were facing. And so everybody understands, if that legislation, which hopefully will come through tomorrow, and will hopefully be signed by the governor, if that doesn't occur, we face a $10 million deficit in the subsequent year. That's $10 million more dollars of cuts on top of the cuts we've already identified, which range to about $28 million, right, Mr. Boyce, thereabouts? So very excited about that. Excited that that's, you know, hopefully, fingers crossed that that, you know, that occurs. And there's been a lot of, you know, really deep advocacy work to help make that happen. So feel good about that, Mr. Bruno. And other than that, that concludes my report.
Mr. Bruno, can I just add something real quick? I just want to acknowledge our LD30 representatives down, that represent Howell, Assemblyman Sean Keen, and Senator Bob Singer, who co-sponsored that legislation. Want to publicly thank them for doing so.
We have some communications. Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have a report, Mr. Bruno. We do have a report.
It's been so long.
I know.
Mrs. Higley, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We have a curriculum meeting today, and you're going to report on it.
And there was a lot there because we haven't. So first of all, we talked about the writing and enhanced implementation workshops, all of the core areas, business, international baccalaureate, the magnet programs, math, science, social studies, Anglo-Tars have all had and been implemented. And in addition to that, after a curriculum is approved and it's been implemented for a year, they go back and revisit and get input from staff, from students, from teachers, everybody, and then they kind of tweak it to make sure that it's working. And it's been a really great success, and I really want to thank the CNI for all the work they've done that because I think the curriculum has really moved a long way in the past 10 years. That's really forward. In addition, there's been professional learning that's going on. And the main part about professional learning, which I think is really exciting, something that teachers have been asking for, is creation of standards-aligned formative assessments that this way, same kids, no matter what school they're in, are receiving the same type of instruction. And plus, these formative assessments make sure that students are being addressed with the same type of material and questions that are going to be asked on SATs, they're going to be asked on their final exams. And the TCAs have all been updated to facilitate this and make sure students are prepared for future tests that they'll be taking. And I think that's been excellent. The next part that we talked about was our school goals, and basically, continued actions for school goals, which is based on also our strategic plan, is again, on planning, instruction, and gatekeeping those assessments. Make sure that these assessments continually make our students able to be successful in future actions. We've been really doing a lot of common formative assessments in resource catalogs, analysis, I think is important. Final exams are put in, and right there, teachers get the immediate data of how their students did. And this summer, they'll go over question by question and see, why did the kids get this wrong? Was it too late in the test? Were they tired? Or was it something that really wasn't addressed? Or was it addressed in class but not presented in the same way? And this way, we can make sure that we're presenting the curriculum the rightful way and that the kids are being assessed in a meaningful and purposeful way. And I think that's really important that we're doing. We're continuing with the school compass and having standards-aligned assessment, and I just think that that's something that we're very successful. Also now, we're having a lot of summer programs going on, and right now, we have credit recovery is for students who did not pass the test, and we have 50 students who are now participating, which is already on credit recovery. We have 154 students in original credit program, whether they're trying to skip a year in math, if they're trying to get their financial literacy course out of the way so they can take other courses. So I think that's really successful. AP Bridge, which helps kids who have never taken an AP class so they can be successful. We have 165 students who are participating, and the Algebra I Bridge Program has 30 students. In addition to all this going on in summer, we also have the ESY program, the Extended School Year, for our special needs students. We have Extended School Year Academic Support for Title I Students, and there's 90 students participating in that. And we have 74 students which are in the Extended School Year Academic Support Program. So we're having a lot of programs that are really important. We also have the Summer College Application Bootcamp for rising seniors to help them with their writing their essays for their college applications, and we have 186 rising seniors participating in that. And that, the tuition for that is only $100, which is really fabulous. We also have English learner intake screening and individual meetings taking place. And most importantly, we're really assessing and doing everything we can to make sure that students are prepared for the NJGPA, which is the Graduation Perferency Assessment, which keeps changing. And I find it, from what I've looked at, is much more difficult than the HESPA or that we had back then, and it's really trying to determine and working with staff to make sure that we're making the students be prepared to take those exams. And they've done a great job, and I just wanted to say that a lot of, I cut it short, you can see how many pages we have, but I didn't want to keep you here for the whole hour.
What, to meet the whole afternoon? I had one question.
Yeah. I have a question, and I was at this meeting. Maybe it went over my head, but the cybersecurity career pathway, did we mention what school that's in, or schools? Okay, thank you.
I just had one question about strategic planning that we just went through. Did we make any changes to curriculum from suggestions on strategic planning? Do you want to answer, Dr. How, or Dr.? Moving forward, okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Board? Okay. Now I'm going to go to Mr. Boyce. Are there any changes?
There is. There is one addition to the pre-printed agenda. It's going to be an additional item, K29, and it is approval of agreement in lieu of discipline. So the resolution reads, "Be it resolved that the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education approved the agreement in lieu of discipline for student 2630132 on file in the office of the Board Secretary." So again, that's K29 we're adding.
We do have some people from the community today. Mr. Stein from Manalapan. Hi, Mr. Stein. Haven't seen you in a while.
I was going to say, nice to see you guys again.
Would we miss you, Eric?
I figured you would, right?
Anybody out there playing and stuff?
Yeah, yes, we are, and that's why I'm here, to just give you guys a little bit of an update. I see a couple of new faces, though, so for those of you that don't know me, I'm Eric Stein. I founded the Manalapan Youth Lacrosse Program. It's been nine years since I founded that program. I founded it with one team. It was a soccer team at the time. His name was Craig Gallon. He had a son who played and said, "I want my kids to play lacrosse." So I played in college. I was coaching at the time. I decided, sure, I'll get you guys to play, and we'll have a fun, fun summer. Well, one summer team led to two fall teams, which led to a program that really was bursting at the seams in Manalapan. And four years ago, I was a regular at this meeting, asking the Board to please, please, please get Manalapan High School a boys' lacrosse team. They had a girls' lacrosse team for a while. So we finally got it. It's a pay-to-play program. The program has been growing, but I figured, I've been here a while, and I know there's been some discussion about the program in the past couple of months of this meeting. I figured I'd come and give you guys an update in terms of where we stand, and just to give you an update, kind of, real high level. So we started with one soccer team, like I told you. We are now 250 kids strong, and it's not just the boys. Last year, we had our first girls' program. Well, it's two years ago, we had our first girls' program, who actually got into the high school this year. We now not only offer a spring program, we also offer a fall youth program. We have winter clinics, and we've started our first competitive teams, like a futures program. Some of the better clubs in town, in the state, offer a town futures program. We now are offering that. The level of competition has gone through the roof. One of the things that I wanted to share with you that I thought was really interesting was, when we first started this, the numbers I would see, in the bulge bracket, I call it, with the number of kids, was seventh and eighth graders. And those were the kids, and that was the highest number of kids that were playing. So I had very few kindergarten kids, and it kind of crept up as we got to the eighth grade. But once we got to the eighth grade, we noticed that number was big. It was those kids that were playing the other sports that stopped playing those sports because they were either aging out or they just weren't as competitive, they started playing. What I really focused on was trying to get that bulge number as low as possible. And this last spring, we had 40 kids in kindergarten, first and second grade, the largest group ever, and it was awesome. We ran an in-house rec program. What that ended up doing, though, is driving that competition. So what we're trying to see is get all the kids trying, just like soccer, we get all the kids playing soccer, we want all the kids playing lacrosse at the youngest levels, and getting them to go up. And that's what we're seeing that growth in. I attribute that to having that high school program. Once we started that high school program, four years, I guess it was four years ago, we missed a year because of COVID, so we've only been three full seasons. But once we got that in, and we got a really solid head coach in there, and we got buy-in from the principal and Ms. English, it has gone through the roof in terms of everyone coming. The culture that we've created with this Manalapan program has been unbelievable. We have the high school kids now helping the youth kids. It helps them with their volunteer hours. We're a 501(c)(3) at the youth level. They come down and they help. When you see these little kids light up with those high school kids helping, they've created a pack, they've created like a sort of a little dynamic. We have these high school kids now coaching the little lancers in their games. We have an in-house rec league. They talk them, "Hey, Coach Steph, he's one of the juniors that did play." It's been unbelievable for that. The tie-in from that youth to the high school has just been awesome. The success we've seen at the high school level has been driven from the youth, though, also. We hosted our first boys' playoff game. I mean, you guys probably follow, you guys know all that. Watching those boys celebrate when they won their first home state playoff game was just insane and awesome. Me and Vin de Maio were sitting under the scoreboard because we operate the scoreboard during the games. Watching those kids run out in that excitement was just awesome. We have three kids that we've graduated from the program, we're only three years deep. We've got three kids that are playing in college, and we've got a huge junior class that is going to be seniors next year. At least a half a dozen of them are looking to play at that next level in college. I will also tell you, nine of our 10 starters for the last, call it, three years have come through our youth program. We're seeing that same tie-in now on the girl's side. So on the girl's side, with Coach Horton, he has gotten, they've had a high school program, we did it backwards on the girl's side. So we didn't have a youth program. My daughter, who's now an eighth grader, or now she can be a freshman in Manalapan next year, wanted to start playing in sixth grade. We've now linked up with Coach Horton on the girl's side. Their girls come down and help that youth program. This last year, the girls' team, 13 wins this season, they actually got into the playoffs. Three of those girls on that team were freshmen that played through the youth program. So we're seeing that development and that growth. It's really awesome to see. So I just wanted to sort of come here and give you that update, and I really wanted to thank you guys for letting us continue to grow this program. That buy-in from that high school team and the coaches has just been unbelievable and has just helped all the kids, all the parents. It's just been awesome. And for me to watch it has just been unbelievable.
I have a question. Are you finding any kids who maybe weren't here with you four years ago that, like, just walk on?
To the high school?
Yeah.
So yes and no. They walk, so what'll happen is, they don't play lacrosse, especially now, these last couple of years, the football coaches are trying to get them to start playing, and they see the athletic kids, they, "Why don't you try lacrosse?" They're really far behind in their skills. So while they're athletic, they end up becoming defensive middies, because they can stay in front of a person, but passing and catching, and the offense is very difficult to catch on to. And the competition, we see at the youth level, too. So whereas, when we first started, everyone made the team, everyone made the A-team. Well, our Manalapan youth program now is the largest or the second largest in the short conference. Not the best, but the second largest in terms of numbers. We've had an A, B, and a C team in some of the grades, and some of the kids don't make the A-team. So I have to deal with some of those parents, explain to them, "Look, you know, you got to play on the B-team or the C-team," and there's a discussion, and there is some difficult discussions that happen with that. And there are sometimes we let the kids try out, and they can try it, and then I stand next to the parents and I have an open conversation with them, and I say, you know, that's kind of the balance. But yeah, it's very hard, if you don't have that experience in the youth program, to start playing in high school and be competitive with it.
Very skilled.
Yeah. We're going to have an issue on the girl's side, because the next couple of years, though, some of those kids that have been playing in the youth program are going to be very skilled coming up. Some of the older kids, who are competitive and had some success, are going to be pushed by those younger kids that have been playing for four or five years and have some lacrosse knowledge as opposed to just being athletic.
Well, good luck with that discussion.
Oh, I had a question, too.
Go ahead.
About the finances. You know, it's the Manalapan High Lacrosse Team, but explain the finances, how that works.
So it's pay-to-play, and each person is responsible for sort of their, and Seth will talk a little bit about this also when he speaks next, but essentially, they pay their way. The youth program is different than the high school program.
Correct.
The high school program, we pay everything. When we first started, though, the youth program had to pay for all the equipment and get it up and running. It was about a $60,000 start that that youth program had to pay. It's about $45,000 a year to run. We've got about 40 kids. They each pay about $1,000, or it's $1,000 they pay to play. If you make the team and you get on the team, you pay that full $1,000. If you don't make that team, that money goes back to you. We have all, you know, we pay for helmets, uniforms, gloves, I can sort of do it all, but the bulk of it is that kid that pays that money. There's also fundraising that we do that chips away. So for instance, that nut is, if you have to pay is $1,000. If you fundraise $2,000 throughout the year, 50% of it goes back to you. There's a whole mathematical calculation and detailed spreadsheets that are behind sort of how that works.
So the initial cost for a kid to play is $1,000?
There is no, if you make the team, it's $1,000. If you fundraise money, though, you can reduce that $1,000. Exactly right. But all the purchasing of the equipment and the helmets and the gloves and all that, that comes through the youth program, essentially.
Anybody else? Any other Board member have a question on that? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hi, Mr. Horowitz, come on up. You look the same that you did four years ago.
I do. I've been working hard on my haircut. Eric stole a little of my thunder there, but first of all, I want to thank you guys. I know it's a thankless job going to meetings all the time and, you know, not getting a lot of, you know, always accolades, but you guys have done a great job. And I remember coming to these meetings seven years ago, when my kid was in fourth grade, hoping Manalapan would have a lacrosse team. And we're one year away from playing lacrosse in college, and it's very realistic it's going to happen. So thank you for those of you that were here seven years ago. I came here more tonight to talk about a couple of things, but I wanted to address a couple of things that specifically popped up in a couple of the meetings that I watched online, and I wanted to address them. I know a couple of questions just popped up. As Eric mentioned, you know, it is pay-for-play, but there was a quote in the April 27th meeting about $1,000 to pay to try out. That is absolutely not true. We estimate, based on the last three years of a budget, that it's about $1,000, roughly $45,000 to run the entire varsity and JV team. I kind of oversee fundraising, but I'm not involved in any of the money. I am the pusher, the fundraiser, the sponsor. Let's keep going. We have different captains, just like in sports, that run each fundraiser. It's very simple. We've taken feedback each year. We have parents that don't want emails, don't want texts, they just want to write a check for $1,000. Great. We have people that turn around and say, "I want to fundraise the whole thing." Great. The average parent paid about $350 out of pocket last year. If you wanted to fundraise, there was plenty of opportunity to do so. As Eric said, fundraising money stays with the team. Parent-paid money goes back to the parent if your child doesn't make the team. And we refund that typically up to seven days after tryouts, because tryouts are normally finished on the weekend, and then there's Venmo limits and things of that nature. But everyone, unfortunately, that didn't make the team the last couple of years was Venmoed immediately back. That's another thing, very important. There was a quote, April 27th, about $45,000 to pay and $30,000 in fundraising, and that this team has $80,000. I want to address that. That absolutely beats the whole purpose of fundraising. If we had $80,000, we would have two years almost of expenses. So the goal is, it's in lieu of. So we did, that is correct. We fundraised about $30,000, and we had parent-paid money of around 15. And again, this is all documented in spreadsheets and numbers that anyone can look at, and Eric has those books for you. Things that people that aren't involved in, and we have, you can tell I'm a little maybe of an over-communicator, but whether it's emails, texts, we had Zooms where we spoke to the parents. Eric alluded to that first year where we had to pay forward, but, you know, we paid, people don't realize, coaches' salaries, $20,000 a year. Equipment can run up to $20,000 a year. Bus trips, for the bus trips that are too far, because we don't want the kids driving, could be anywhere between $5,000 to $10,000 a year. We're already over $45,000. Things that we didn't anticipate, not having access to a locker room. You know, the kids are walking and taking their stuff down to 522. We fundraised and built a varsity shed at the rec center. We bought $10,000 worth of equipment two years ago. We were so excited, they were brand-new chest protectors. What happens? Unfortunately, something happened in the United States, where it made all those chest protectors throughout the United States illegal, and they needed to add heart guards. We're not your normal group that could get a $10,000 refund, and I know I'm up against that could get a $10,000 refund. And I know I'm up against some times. So I just wanted to quickly address that. Because the quote was, there was a misappropriation of funds in massive six figures. And I just wanted to address and make sure that, that's a libelous statement, and I wanted to make sure it's very clear. I don't think people realize all the expenses that are paid year to year. I will not mention the teacher's name, but on the May 11th, there was a comment, and I'm bringing this up on my own, that there was a situation with a teacher that could be potentially dangerous for a student. All I want to say is, putting two and two together, watching, watching the video, that this couldn't be the furthest thing from the truth. Where I have watched this teacher coach a couple of years ago, unfortunately, inform us, "Hey, I had to cut X amount of kids. So we have to work together to fundraise." But before that happened, he actually came to us and said, "What else can we do for them? I want to keep them involved. I want to keep them in the program." And we sat down and we thought about it. And he already decided he was making the managers of the team. Then he searched out and found a coach that was a rec coach in a local place, center court, where we got these boys that wanted to play more involved in a rec team. Some of them chose that option. Some of them played, some of them improved, but one really improved and actually made this year's team. That was the purpose. It's an inclusive environment. You know, we have kids that are in school, they're leaders, they're volunteering. I know Eric alluded to that. You know, kids are doing it for National Society Hours, they're doing it. Some of them are, are, are working for the teams. You have kids that didn't make the team that are volunteering their time. It is something that people want to be part of. Unfortunately, we had a couple of kids this year that were hurt. They went to practice every day. Find me another sport where that happens. They wanted to be part of the team, and that teacher, that coach, built a family. And it really is amazing. And I just wanted to say that, you know, this group is doing such a good job. And I, I don't want to pat myself on the back, just the group. There's a team of people. It's not Eric Stein, it's not me, it's all of us together. There's about five to seven people. Other clubs and organizations that are seeing the shortfall of money that is coming down the pike are now building parent club organizations at the high school. And they're coming to us to say, "How do you do it? What's fundraising? What are we allowed to do?" And they're building this, and we're involved in helping these other teams. And, and that's good for the parents. I'm a big believer, coaches coach, players play, parents are here to make it a better experience for the kids. I want to thank you for giving us this experience, and I really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to take H1 through H22? Ms. McCab? Second, Mrs. Capiello? Discussion Board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call?
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Ms. McCab?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. The next is I1 through IJ9. It's Programmed Operations, Buildings, Transportation, and the Physical Plant. May I have a motion?
Second.
Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Higley, second. Discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call?
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Ms. McCab?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Educational Programs and Administration, K1 through L3. Mrs. Capiello?
Second.
Mrs. Higley, second. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call?
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Ms. McCab?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Does any board members have old business to discuss? I think, Amanda, you said you had some old business?
Yeah. I think it's like the D vote, so.
Business.
It's a business.
You can put it in either one.
You can do it. Go for it.
So on May 29th was the Freehold Memorial Day Parade. We had several of our schools that were successful in winning awards at that parade. Freehold Township High School Marching Band won first place Best Overall Judges' Choice, first place Best Band, and first place Best Color Honor Guard. They really stole the show. Colts Neck High School, Naval Junior ROTC, won second place, Best Color Honor Guard. And every year, the Freehold Memorial Day Parade Committee has an award that they give out for the school, middle school or high school in the area that has the most volunteers show up to help the committee that year. It is called the Alice McCab Freehold Memorial Day Parade Volunteer Trophy. They should have shortened that. But this year, Howell High School won with a total of 32 volunteers coming out from Howell High School. Altogether, the committee had about 115 volunteers come out, and probably about 80 to 90 of them approximately were from the Freehold Regional High School District. So we had a-
Great.
-a very good turnout there. And congratulations to all the graduates for, that graduated last week.
You went to two graduations.
I did.
So it was a beautiful day for the parade.
Yes, it was.
It was.
With the farming deal. Okay. Any new business?
I have new, I have a couple, a couple of things, Mr. Bruno.
Is it new or is it-
It's new.
Okay.
So just wanted to also, I failed to note during my report that our LEA Plan for Safe Return is on the agenda. That still needs to be updated every six months, even though the public health emergency has long since passed. But we are certainly compliant with the state requirements. I do also want to just comment on something Ms. Higley said. I never thought I would long for the days of HESPA. But it turns out that somehow that was probably a better assessment than NJGPA, which the whole world turns, and we go on and on and on. But I do, I want to thank, Ms. Higley gave an awesome overview. You know, I, I think our summer programs are one of the things that really also set this district apart in terms of the opportunities and the support that we provide students simultaneously to both advance and, and, and get that needed support to, to, to keep pace with where they've been. And, and, you know, on any given day from now, over the next couple of weeks, we have anywhere between 11 and 1,200 students still in our buildings actively engaged. And I think that's a wonderful testament to this school district. And finally, I just want to ask Fran Stevenson to stand up. So Fran, stand up, please. So Fran is a longtime guidance counselor at Howell High School, but she is now moving to Freehold High School and will be the new supervisor of guidance for the Freehold High School, for Freehold High School, Freehold Borough High School. And, you know, Fran's, Fran's one of those people in the district that is always the, the first to raise her hand to help, involved in everything, has an enormous amount of respect across the district. So we're looking forward to Fran assuming that role at Borough. So congrats, Fran.
She is really at everything. So she does everything. So we're going to miss you. Don't be a stranger. Come back to Howell and visit. Any other board members, any other new business? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, God. Okay, that was fast.
Keeping with Mr. Mos.
May I have a second?
Speaking up with Mr. Hesch, yes.
May I have a second?
Diana.
Diana? All those in favor?
Aye.
Needs adjourn.